Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, August 26th, 2019. I'll call the meeting to order. First item of business is to review the agenda.
Move to approve is presented second.
Jeff has moved, Santos has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Item three is receive comments from the public. Anyone here wishing to address the board on the subject not already on our agenda? Please step forward. Yes, sir. Please identify yourself at the podium.
My name's Kyle Gertz, and I'd like to bear with me for just a second. Play through the top story that was on Channel 6 News last evening.
Your top story attends the ride of a lifetime. Hundreds of motorcyclists traveling hundreds of miles. A final ride for an American hero, a Muscatine veteran. Riders from across the globe filled the roads in Iowa, Missouri, in two states to pay their respects to a fellow brother. Good evening, I'm Chris Carter. Jenna has the night off. It was a ride to bring their brother home after he died unexpectedly last week. Chuck Gertz died last Monday in Kansas City when he was hit and killed. He was on his way home from another veterans event in Colorado. His procession home today was miles long. This is video of that procession as it made its way to the funeral home in Muscatine. Hundreds of motorcyclists and law enforcement escorted Gertz from Kansas City. One person even turned up from as far away as Australia. It was a testament to the man. He was a good man.
Chuck saved my life, saved a lot of our lives. He saved so many people through English River Outfitters. And that will not stop.
A man that would take his shirt off his back for you. And I just can't wait to continue growing his legacy and make it hero the best it can be.
Now Chuck's legacy will not end with his, with his death. He really did give back. He founded Hero, or Healing an English River Outfitters, an organization focused on helping veterans suffering from PTSD or depression, and has helped over thousands over the last 11 years. Brian Tavick shows us how they are working to fill the void. New tonight.
I don't know anybody that had a big one. So if nobody caught that on the news last night, my brother Chuck retired from the United States Army, 23 years. He founded Hero, Healing an English River Outfitters. It's an organization that has reached out globally. The news called it global. Every county, every city, every place we went yesterday bringing my brother home from Kansas City, there was the county, the city, the fire department was there. The man's from Muscatine. Not a single Muscatine County police officer, firefighter, or sheriff was on the road. None. None. So here's what I'm asking. CJ Ryan, I know Sheriff Ryan, and I will prove it. I'll get the facts. Put out a memo yesterday that none of his people were to support this event. I'll find the proof. I know it's there. I've talked to two deputies already. We need to investigate why Sheriff Ryan would put out a message like that to our people in our county when this is our brother that we brought home. So I'm asking, Scott, I know yesterday I was very emotional on the phone. I apologize for the language.
No, it's fine.
But I'm asking the Board of Supervisors, what have we found out? Scott, I know I called you last night and asked you to talk to others.
Right. Well, when you called me previously earlier in the day, obviously I put a call into CJ, and he did not take my call. Wasn't able to answer the call, whatever. Then I called Muscom over here to find out if there was any type of, of plan to have sheriff personnel on the road. And the dispatch person that, that I spoke with came back on the phone after checking. She said, "We don't have personnel on, available to do this." And I said, "Okay." And CJ called me back approximately an hour after that and said that they have two deputies that were on patrol at the time and that didn't feel that they had enough people in that regard, just two deputies on the road, to put them to be involved in that situation, I guess the best way I can say it. And that they had, they had looked for volunteers throughout the department to participate in this, and they did not have any volunteers to participate, is what CJ told me.
Okay. So I'd like to address first the safety of our county. We can have a Monday, or we can have a Sunday afternoon, and we only have two deputies on the road to protect our entire county? What kind of manning force is that? Is the sheriff actually putting enough people out there to protect all of us when we drive on the road? That sounds like only two deputies. That's a problem. The other is, if I've talked to at least, I've talked to one deputy that would have volunteered if there was a volunteer list. CJ put out a message that if you volunteer, or if you support it, your job could be in jeopardy. So I'm asking the county supervisors that we need to investigate this, and Sheriff Ryan needs to be suspended until this investigation is done. Because this is disrespectful to not just my brother, but to every veteran in this county. And I will go door to door, and I'll get a petition from every veteran in Muscatine County to support a suspension of Sheriff Ryan. Because this is completely, it's unspeakable. This is a guy, this is a man who, who lived in our, in our community, supported veterans to the point where he, he saved multiple lives. A man from Australia came all the way here because he spent a weekend at, at English River Outfitters and didn't commit suicide. These are the things that I'm talking about. And Sheriff Ryan, this county, this city disrespected not only one veteran, but all veterans. Something needs to be done about it. I put my brother to rest next Saturday, this coming Saturday. We'll have a huge event at the National Guard Armory. I'm not asking for any support. We'll take care of it. We're hiring people to come in. I don't want the county involved. We will take care of getting my brother to his final resting place. But I'll be back next Monday for an answer on what kind of action this board intends to take.
Mr. Gertz, I, I can answer that question for you now. And certainly, I didn't know your brother. Been reading about him. A hell of a guy, amazing. And as a member of the mental health board, I have nothing to respect. But as you may know, we're, we're one elected body. The sheriff is an elected person. There are various other elected officials. The elected officials don't have any power over the other elected officials. So the sheriff, even though we tax her his budget, we have no ability to suspend him. We have no ability to discipline him. We have no ability to fire him. We can't do anything by virtue of the law. So there's nothing we can do. Just to let you know, I don't want you to be disappointed or misled. I mean, I completely understand what you're saying, but there's nothing the county board of supervisors or anybody can do to an elected official, other than have an election.
I disagree with you, sir, because I, I will, I will be talking to a state senator today.
Okay.
And I'm telling you, somebody can police our sheriff department. And if you can't, our county attorney can. Somebody needs to look into it. When it's called for an investigation, this board owes the city and the, the people of this county at least the respect of looking into it and doing an investigation, doing an inquiry. And you can do that.
Well, if I understand the law correctly, the only person who can take any kind of action is the county attorney if they find that certain laws have been broken. So I would, you know, certainly.
And you can certainly talk to the county attorney, sir. I know this board can. And this board can have an influence on what the county attorney does or doesn't do.
And I'm not trying to argue.
Okay. I'm just saying, don't tell me nothing can be done when I know something can be done.
Right. The county attorney can initiate an action if their, the law's been broken. Okay. But it's the county attorney that has the authority. You may remember the, the whole mess up in, in Muscatine City with the mayor and the city council. That's a very difficult area of the law, as I understand it. It's very hard to know who's got authority over, over what. So we'll talk to the county attorney. You may want to as well. But, you know, certainly, I, as I understand the law, we have no power to do that.
Well, I won't be talking to the county attorney, because some of you know the history of why I think we've gotten to this point. And it's a discrimination against myself, because Sheriff Ryan has rolled my brother, this whole thing, into the old Sons of Silence thing, because CJ Ryan discriminates against anybody riding a motorcycle. And I guarantee, I, I, we will, we'll go back and we can prove different things, that he, he has specifically picked out motorcyclists and certain motorcycle clubs that he will tell his deputies not to support, not to help. So we'll get there. I won't talk to the county attorney, but I'll have somebody talk to him. And I, my next move is to see the mayor. So I appreciate hearing from you. And like I said, I will be back next Monday. Whether there's an answer, whether there's not, some type of action has to be taken. And I, I'll spread that throughout the county. If you think Channel 6 covered this one, they'll cover the next story that we have too. I, I will, I mean, the media, we, we will get the veterans, and we will get CJ Ryan out of office.
Thank you, Mr. Gertz. Anyone else? Next up is item number four, discussion and possible action to approve claims dated August 26th, 2019 in the amount of $1,309,690.82.
Move to approve. Second.
Jeff has moved, Santos has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item number five is discussion and possible action to approve the 2019 homestead tax credit and military exemption applications, excuse me, as recommended by the Muscatine County Assessor's Office. Good morning, Senator.
Good morning. Last week, when I spoke to the board, I mentioned that our office reviews the names and addresses of the homestead and military credit applications and added new applications. My apologies to the board, but I did not recommend to the board for approval for the 2019 applications. So our recommendation to the board is to allow the 2019 homestead and military credit applications as presented by the assessor. Does anyone have any questions?
And there's just one page, am I correct?
No.
It's like 11 pages.
We had.
Yeah, that's the military one. There's another spreadsheet that was, like 11 pages, yeah.
There were like 470 new homestead applications and approximately 47 military, around that amount. So.
I'd move the approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second by Santos. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number six, items with Historic Preservation Commission member Lynn Pruitt. Morning, Lynn.
Morning. The Muscatine County Historic Preservation Commission has two items that we like to bring before the board today. One of those is in regard to a project we've been trying to get off the ground for, what, a year and a half now. It's called Country Schools and Churches. This will be the third time we're applying for a grant to get money from the state to do this work. It's, so you've heard it before. We, we went after what's called a CLG grant a year ago. It was called Country Schools, Churches, and Cemeteries at the time. We didn't get that grant. We went after one called an HRDP grant six months ago. Didn't get that grant. Each, and they, they keep telling us, "Oh, no, apply again, apply again." So we're applying one more, third time's charm, hopefully. And this grant will let us go out to all the locations in the county where there was a country school and a country church. There are a few of those that still exist, not many. They're fading, fading away. So that's why we want to get this documented before, while there's still a few older folks around that can help us with that. So that's our objective. When we find a few, we're going to try to get them on the National Register of Historic Places, ones that still exist. The others, we want to document with signage, to say, here was the site where the, whatever school was from 1860 through 1950, whatever dates they were, and have that up. This particular grant does not include the signage, but it's going to get the locations down, get them all into GPS coordinates, so that that can be a separate project later on. At this point, we're just trying to get the study done.
And Lynn, did I look and review on that grant application, there was some match, someone volunteered. Is your entirely a volunteer hour match, or do you have a cash match as well?
There's a cash match of $4,250, which happens to match exactly with the amount of money that was from the historic bridge. You remember West, West Liberty, I think it was 150th Street, about four or five months ago, that the Corps of Engineers wanted some kind of mitigation for taking that bridge out, the historic bridge. And they came up with that number of $4,250, which would be basically transferred from one county funds to another county fund.
So we have the funding to, to meet the match.
And there is quite a bit of in-kind support as well.
Yeah, I saw a number, I saw a number of volunteer hours. So I'd move for the approval.
Jeff has moved. Is there a second? Doug has seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. We will need a, a letter of approval from you to attach to the grant application. It's due the 6th of September.
You've got a draft there at the end, it looks like.
Yeah. Well, the one I put in was just a placeholder. I'm sure there's been one drafted up.
Yep.
Yep, they have it.
There's one, there's one available for the site.
Second item is in regard to work we're doing in Nichols. We've done a, already done one project there to get the downtown area listed as, on the National Register of Historic Places as a historic district. That application is into the state now. All the work is done. We're just waiting on their approval, hopefully approval when they meet in next month in Des Moines. The second project that we want to do there, and we had approval for this one before. It's called a TAN grant, T-A-N, Technical Assistance Network grant, to look at historic churches and a couple of historic Nichols family homes in Nichols, see if they qualify. This is an update of that. The rules have changed at the state. They have a new name for it. It's in a letter from Price Preservation Services, and I haven't got it memorized yet. But anyway, it's just got a different name. It's not TAN anymore. But we needed to update that. So we asked for your approval. There's no funding requirements, other than the expense, travel expenses and some miscellaneous printing. The state pays the 24 hours per project that the consultant invests in this project to. If they determine it's eligible, then there's a good chance we'll hire that consultant to do the actual application. So that's why they invest this effort upfront. But the state pays their labor.
I'd move for the approval.
Jeff has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Santos has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just while I'm up here, last week, we got the plaque up on the old barn, county barn, to show it as listed on the National Register of Historic Places with Kurt Wise. And that was a, a good event. And so we're working on the jail. You all know about that. I think Lisa Wirth's blogger was in here a few weeks ago. And that's moving ahead. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. Item number seven is County Engineer Keith White. Good morning, Keith.
Good morning. First item is we have the funding agreement with the DOT to utilize swap funds on the very bridge that Ben spoke of on 120th Street.
I would move the approval.
Jeff has seconded. Scott has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
When would, when would construction start in that future? An idea, has it been let?
No. This is one of the 100 items, boxes to check to get to letting. Letting this win, construction, the ones we let last winter are just starting out in August. So sometime next year should be done. Thank you. Next item, I left a sheet for you there. We're looking at trading off our 2005 CAT wheel loader for the newer version. We've gone from a 930G to a 930M. Believe it or not, the net price is actually lower than we paid for the one in 2005. And I assume that means we have something worth, worth a little bit more. Prices haven't gone up horribly. And this is one that, that needs to go. Questions on that?
Is that M a bigger machine or?
It's not. It's about the same. The, yeah, we paid $127, $270 for the other one.
With trade? That was the net price with your old trade?
Yeah. I don't think we had much for value there, so.
How many hours do we normally get on some of these?
That's in, in the neighborhood of what we get. In, in this case, it's, you know, it's aged more against the thin hours, really, the 3,000 hours.
It gets used in a lot of salt, too.
Yeah.
We have to start through us.
Yeah, and it's, it still is.
So will we be purchasing a new unit or a one-year-old?
A new unit.
Okay.
New unit.
I'm moved.
They're about 17 weeks out on those.
Jeff has moved, Doug has seconded. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Projects update?
The hot mixed asphalt paving continues. They had finished up on Kelly, and they've been shouldering there. And we're about two-thirds done. Don't know what the weather will do to them today, but if they get done there, then they'll, they'll start paving on Bancroft tomorrow. And that would be the last of that. Seeing what else is, is new. Like, again, the one on, the bridge on 155th is supposed to start later this week. Originally, they had said today, but later this week. And McCully did get started on the one on North Ice last week. Friday, they took the bridge out. And so they're going right out. That's about it in the construction world, design world. I mean, since we're mainly focused on construction, not a lot there. We did hear back from Bridgestone, and they're working to get their water main located. So that's.
Goals.
That's plus up. And if everything else, there's kind of no change. We got about a dozen projects in design. Questions on any of that?
Anyone?
No.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Anything else, Keith?
This is all I have.
All right. Carry on. Thanks. Item number eight is items with Planning and Zoning Administrator Eric Furnas. Good morning, Eric.
First item is just, I'm seeking authorization to submit a request by a Homeland Security Emergency Management for FEMA Public Assistance for Demolition and Debris Removal. This is part of the Public Assistance Program that I'm working with Keith on, same funding stream that they give to the county for infrastructure damage. This is strictly the demo project. This would be to demolish and remove structures that have been deemed dangerous as a result of damage from flood. This is not part of the buyout program. This is just a separate Public Assistance Fund. We've identified five structures that we believe would qualify for that. We have a limited amount of time to get properties on that list. They can be removed at any time, but we have to submit a list of ones that we believe would be eligible for that. So we're still evaluating, and there'll be a whole bidding process. But this would authorize me to basically put a flag in, excuse me, put a flag in. to basically put a flag in, excuse me, put a flag in here that we're going to be requesting money under that program. If we do not do this, these structures would remain dangerous and nuisance dilapidated structures, and eventually, we'd have to work through a process where the property owners would have to bear the cost of removing them. Removing them, these are, structures are probably beyond repair. And so, since we have a disaster declaration, it opens up funding that, at minimum, hopefully, will provide the, the funding to remove these structures. So, I'm just seeking your approval to submit the list of structures that we believe would meet that criteria. Not a guarantee that all of them will be on there, but we have to kind of put our mark to sand at this point before the.
I move for the approval.
Jeff has moved, Scott has seconded. Any further discussion?
Eric, how do we determine how much funding's needed for something like this?
We'll have to come up with an estimate based on the size of the structures. We'll have to solicit bids, most likely go through a bidding process for demolition. We'll have to write an R and B for the demolition project itself. Asbestos mitigation, or a survey at least. I can in-house probably get the state historic designation, we'll study done on them, we have to go through all those tubes, so, but we have to follow all the bidding processes and that.
So, when you, when you have all that, so like, we have the number, like, let's say you said five homes there, is there going to be then, I'm just going to throw a number out, let's say it's twenty-five thousand dollars per home to demo, then do we, do we then come back in and have FEMA look at these homes and then say, or how do we?
In, in the past, it'd be all from our records, our inspection records, our photographs that we, that we update and submit. The FEMA people that were on site with, with Keith during the original scoping meetings, they went out with him and looked at the damaged roads and the, and cart with parks. They didn't indicate that they needed to do an inspection, they just wanted us to do the inspections and submit photographs in the application. But, we'd be back before you when we come up with an amount and as far as the bidding process and all of that, we'll, we'll have a figure in mind if we're requesting. This is just to get addresses on the list before the, the deadline date, and then there's a whole lengthy federal process to work through as far as bids and approval, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So, ahead.
All right, we have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those in favor? Passes.
Okay, then item B, just kind of refresh your memories a little bit. We also have a structure in the county in nineteen ninety-five Slayland Road that I know you're aware of, Mr. and Mrs. Antrim, the property owner, in attendance today, that sustained significant damages as a result of some shifting the soil to the hillside. They had reached out to the board, we had inquired through Homeland, Iowa Homeland Security as to whether that would be eligible for a FEMA buyout project, like, a couple of these on the demo list maybe as well. Initial indications are that it's, that it's not, not eligible. They use a formula where they look at probability and frequency of the type of event that caused the damage. It kind of staggers my mind because our valuation would indicate the structure's beyond repair. It's a dangerous structure as, as a real result, at least in part, to the heavy rains and the disaster period that we went through this spring. But, it has to spit out a benefit cost ratio number that FEMA's software likes, and they're telling us that it's not. So, we've been working closely with Iowa Homeland Security to try to come up with other funding sources that, that may be eligible. Now, all indications are that I can get demo money for that project, but that still leaves them with a house and a property, you know. So, we are pursuing the demo funds for that structure as well, and it can be used in conjunction with any buyout program. Iowa Homeland Security has, it had made us just last week aware of a possible other funding source in the spring, the General Assembly passed, and the governor signed the Iowa Flood Recovery Fund. I don't know a lot of details on it, it just was made, I was made aware of it last week. It's fifteen million dollars, and this, this group that makes up the advisory board has not even met yet. But, again, I'm seeking your approval to reach out to them, to designate me as your point of contact officially, so I can work and see if funding is available for people that have damaged structures and may not be eligible for FEMA funds. Again, this would just basically designate me as your point of contact, allow me to submit the paperwork on behalf of the owners in nineteen ninety-five. There's only fifteen million dollars, it's probably going to be a highly competitive fund, but with the holiday next week, I wanted to get that done with your approval, and then I could move forward and try to get an application submitted on their behalf and see where it goes. I did talk to Nancy, we didn't want to wait another week to find out more details, and really, all you're doing is just giving the authorization to work on your behalf to see if we can get funds.
Yeah, I completely agree with that.
I'd move the approval.
Jeff has moved, and Scott has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, just a question back on the FEMA, because I know we went around a little bit on a, on a DLS. You know, have you, I mean, is there any recourse or any, can we elevate that discussion of FEMA? I mean, because really, I understand the whole notion of probabilistic future probabilities, but, you know, as I said before, it's like, we know the probability is a hundred percent in the future on this, so if we, you know, if the Antrums were to go keep pouring money, and they're going to pour money into a hole, and, and so, there's got to be some program out there, and, or at least some logic that they can apply to this process, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Iowa Homeland Security suggested another approach, instead of the probability of, or the interval, the damage interval historic approach to get that benefit cost ratio, that you could hire an engineer to evaluate the site and come up with a future, probable future damages based on five-year rain events or, or something of that nature, to see if then FEMA software would spit out a better benefit cost ratio. I know the Antrums are kind of evaluating whether they want to hire an engineer or not to do that, because there was no guarantees that, that that would produce the number that FEMA software requires to make it eligible. If this was in a floodplain, a hundred-year floodplain, this, all indications are would be a slam dunk. Homeland Security is telling me that if it's a house in a floodplain that's valued at two hundred and seventy-six thousand, I believe, or less, it's going to be buyout eligible based on what they know about recurring flooding events. I believe it has to do with the ha, the type of hazard, it makes it more difficult to achieve that, to get that number that they're looking for. So, that's why we're going to, we're kind of beating the bushes, trying to find other, whether it's state or, or national funding sources that may accomplish the same thing.
Do, do we have any ideas what that engineering study cost might look like at this point?
They had reached, the Antrums had reached out to an engineer that evaluated the structure in the past for him and prescribed some fixes. I believe he was in that five hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollar range. However, you know, I think before he did that, I would want him to speak directly with the guy at Homeland Security, make sure that he's evaluating exactly what they think would be needed. It, I'm not overly optimistic on that approach, but again, you know, that's kind of up to them. If they want to attempt that, it's probably worth a shot, and they may do that, but that's up to them, unless, you know.
I look at Keith, because he's like, probably got the most FEMA experience in the room. What's your, what's your opinion to Keith? Marking up a tree, or?
I, I think we're on kind of unknown ground there.
That approach that they, that they suggested, he admitted had never been taken before. Normally, these are flood damaged structures, they look at the, the interval, the historic damage interval chance to get that number, and he said that this, this approach could be tried, but I've never had anybody do it, so, beyond that, he's not able to give us any estimate of success chance.
The challenge I see that we have working with FEMA is, it's like a revolving gate for people, so we don't have any, it's hard to get a person that you really know and can follow through a process. This, this is very troubling to me, this whole process is.
Yeah, it's kind of a no-brainer as far as I consider it. We're steered to, to work initially through Iowa Homeland Security, they're our point of contact for these type of things, but they're the ones that do also experience that, you know, that revolving door FEMA representation, reissue. All my contacts have been with Iowa Homeland Security, that's who I'm directed to, to initiate these programs with. They kind of, I think, are a screening clearinghouse, supposed to know the FEMA processes. So.
Eric, are you familiar with any other scenario like this in, in past history that had taken place in this type of situation? Or, I, I can't think of a single event in Muscatine County that I can think of ever.
Not in Muscatine County, I mean, on my recollection of the FEMA.
There's all kinds of that happened throughout the country in different locations that are, have a history of it.
I wonder if we, you know, have, I mean, I don't even, I'm just trying to think about it, or, you know, I don't know that our state delegations might be somebody to reach out to, but even our federal bodies who might be the person to talk to that might understand this and how to go forward.
It just seems that there has to be some type of havoc, because this event is no fault of our.
No, at all, I agree.
Right.
I'm guessing in certain regions of the country, there's a probability established. You go in California, I'm guessing landslides are like, are a hundred-year floodplain, are to us. You know, the, the frequency is there, the numbers are there, the probabilities are there. But they're telling us that it's not, even though it's, in my mind, a complete loss as a result of Mother Nature. So, that's why we're trying to turn over any other stones, look for funding sources.
And the insurance companies height on this thing under the listed apparel, listed apparel's garbage language?
Yeah, it's a typical exclusion on your homeowner's policy in this area unless you buy special coverage for that type of thing. It's, it's rarely covered in this area, that type of hazard.
Maybe the trans commission is placed to start it, I don't know. Interesting.
But, so, we'll, we'll, we'll keep working on their behalf with your, with your direction, and, and I'm sure we'll be back in front of it with updates.
Yeah, thank you.
Keep us posted.
Yeah, thanks.
Number nine is discussion of possible act, true approval minutes of the August nineteenth regular meeting.
True approval.
Second. Scott has moved, Santos is second, how about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number ten correspondence, Santos?
I just got the email this morning regarding, same thing that I think everybody else got, that Nancy just sent out. That's all I have, from the military tech exemption.
Yeah, I, I saw the same note that was sent to the chair, regarding a disallowing of a military exemption.
Right, yeah, that, that's all I received as well. I don't know that we have any.
I am going to pursue with the Treasurer's Office. If this individual is receiving SSI, then in, I believe, according to the code, they would be eligible for tax suspension, which suspends all of the taxes, and, and they can, as long as that person continues to receive benefits, they can stay that way until the house is sold, and then at that time, the taxes get caught up. So, I'm going to pursue that option and see if that might be a solution for them, and if it is, then we'll be back to you with a resolution.
Major Nancy.
Mm-hmm.
Scott, any correspondence?
The only thing I have is my call from conference that I talked about previously, that was all I had.
Governor. How about committees, Governor?
At West Liberty, or Wilton Development on Wednesday, terrible on Thursday. We had a race on Saturday. Big show.
Committee reports from the Conservation Board on Monday the nineteenth, and just a little information here to parallel the, the problems of the high waters and flooding. They had a rundown user fees, and for this particular year, had a total of thirty-three thousand dollars and change in user fees, and you go back to the previous year, and it was fifty-five thousand dollars and change. So, it, it really shows the, the situation and for current group as far as being able to try and to look at projects and budgets with the rollercoaster ride of Mother Nature, that's all I have.
I had the Mental Health and Disability Services meeting on Monday. Fairly normal meeting, Jeff?
No committees last week.
Santos?
I had the West Liberty Housing Committee Group on Tuesday, the twentieth, and we had a kind of roundtable group from the West Branch City Manager, Wilton, Economic Development Leads came in and discussed about how they had been working together with their city in regards to coming up with either tax abatements, TIFs, opportunities, looking at ways of, you know, getting their homes and their, you know, new homes built. I was surprised to hear how West Branch had gone from thirty to forty homes, three triplexes, and just the growth that they're seeing. So, we basically just got together and tried to brainstorm to see how we can continue to, just to maybe look at that growth in, in West Liberty.
Great.
On later Tuesday, also, I had the Solid Waste Commission. We didn't have enough for a quorum, but we did talk to the team in regards to seeing from the city to coming to our, our meeting in regards to recycling. I said that you would probably be sending them an email in regards to making the attendance, and we had a good discussion in regards to that, and looking for ways that we can probably help the county residents in that forum for recycling. Then on Thursday, I had the regular monthly meeting for the housing, I mean, the wheelie as well, too. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any information from county employees?
Just give you an update, last Monday, we did have our hazard mitigation kickoff with a by-state commission. Pretty much just a little short PowerPoint presentation. Had a lot of the school districts, areas there, and others. Just letting you know, next month, we're planning two public hearings. I'm working with by-state commission on that, looking at locations, probably MCC and then considering West Liberty, so, I'll keep you informed of what's, what's going on with that.
Sir, anyone else? Okay, items at the administration office. Got anything for it, Nancy?
I do not.
All right, anybody else have anything? Going once, going twice? Turn.